We're good, Robin?
Go ahead, Dr. Kulikowski.
Good evening. Welcome to the Scotch Plains-Famwood Board of Education Open Agenda Meeting, online and live streamed. Today is Thursday, November 12th, 2020. Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Mrs. Brody?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Soriani?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mrs. Winkler?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. An executive session held just prior to this meeting, we spoke about the personnel report, the legal status update, and LET5, which was of a personal nature. At this time, we have an addition to the agenda added after Monday, November 9th, which were LETs to the board. There were two additional emails received. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains-Famwood Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Such notice was also provided in written notice and forwarded to The Times, The Star-Ledger, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, and the Borough Clerk of Famwood at the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings adopted March 26, 2020. At this time, we will have our instructional updates. First, we'll have the 2019-2020 School Safety Data Systems HIB for the reporting period of January through June 2020 and the self-assessment scores for July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, presented by Ms. Lisa Rabimbas, Director of Special Services, and Ms. Lisa Mora, District Social Worker and District Anti-Bullying Coordinator. Mrs. Rabimbas, Ms. Mora, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, twice a year, the Board of Education receives a report of the Student Safety Data System, or the SSDS. It combines two state reporting systems, the Electronic Vandalism Violence and Vandalism System and the Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Investigations, Trainings, and Programs Systems. The data presented is based on five identified categories by the State Department of Education and is entered biannually into the reporting system. This data is reported publicly to the Board of Education two times a year. The following data is for the reporting period of January to June 2020. So in the area of violence, we had three incidents reported. In the areas of vandalism and weapons, we did not have any incidences reported. In the area of substance, we had nine incidents reported, and Ms. Mora will report on the HIB cases specifically, but there were six confirmed cases reported via the SSDS. Ms. Mora will go over the HIB reporting on investigations, trainings, and programs.
Thank you. I'll now be going through with you the HIV data as well as information regarding the trainings and programs in the districts and the remediations and consequences implemented. The following data is from January to June of 2020. As Mrs. Rabimbas said, there were a total of six confirmatives. We completed a total of 16 investigations. The status of all investigations are completed as recorded on the Monthly Board of Ed Agenda. One of the components of the law is also taking a look at whether any of our HIV incidents were based on a protected category. Of the six confirmed cases, one was based on mental, physical, or sensory disability; one was based on sexual orientation; and one was based on race. I'd like to note that this is not an unduplicated number, meaning one case could be in more than one protected category. All other cases were based on other distinguishing characteristics that did not include an identified protected category. All of our investigations were completed by anti-bullying specialists assigned to each building. In addition to that, on a case-by-case basis, administration may have also assisted with investigations. You prior did receive a detailed list of consequences that were provided. However, I would like to highlight some of the consequences imposed for students found to be participating in HIV, included parent conferences, detentions assigned, both in and out-of-school suspension, students assigned projects and community service. This is just to name a few. There were also a variety of remediations as well, focusing on education. Again, you were provided a list, but I would like to highlight the different classroom lessons, which included personal space using iMessages, conflict resolution, kindness, self-advocacy, the impact of rumors, and digital citizenship. Other remediations included counseling, referral for both in-school and outside resources, sensitivity training, and also grade-wide initiatives. There were a number of trainings that focused on the district HIV policy and the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, as well as trainings to improve both school climate and culture. Note additional trainings specific to COVID. We have programs that we run every spring, but when March came, additional trainings were focused on avoiding re-traumatization in a COVID world, making schools a place of reflection instead of reaction. We also looked at how to handle HIV cases and discrimination claims in a now virtual world. I'd also like to note that these trainings really only are recorded from January to June, however, so this does not reflect all of the training that staff did throughout the summer.
Did we just lose her?
Oh, hello?
Hello, there you go, okay.
I'm back. I'm not sure where I got bumped off.
You froze for a moment.
Did you hear trainings?
Some.
Okay. So I'll go back to the training part. So there were a number of trainings that focused on our HIB policies, and I do want to just highlight, I mean, you have a full list of the trainings, but one thing I would like to highlight is that, you know, the additional trainings that were provided once the pandemic hit. And some of those really were on supporting students, on how to avoid re-traumatization, how to make the schools a place of reflection. We looked at some of our legal response in investigation as well as how to handle claims in a virtual world. And I also did want to highlight that these trainings really only reflect from January to June, so it does not include all of the training that happened throughout the summer that staff participated in. Our programs continue to have a variety of programs across all grade levels. The district continues to provide lessons on anti-bullying, responsive classroom, behavioral expectations, kindness. We also have an assortment of programs that foster leadership and service learning. You'll notice that some of the programs allow for older students to provide peer mentorship to younger grades as well. Even with COVID, our staff was able to still provide some programming virtually, such as morning meetings. There was a virtual mindfulness club and all of the different graduation activities, just to name a few, that were able to still be done throughout April, May, and June. That covers the HIV part of our presentation. I would like to now move into the self-assessment scores. Making sure my connection is still there, okay? I'm still live. I haven't frozen yet. Okay. All right, so it's required by state law. The Commissioner of Education have developed a program to grade schools yearly on their effort to implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. This assessment is designed in a rubric form, and it's to be implemented as a self-assessment. So there are eight core elements in the self-assessment, and within each core element, there are one to five indicators in which a school can receive points. So points are given on a scale from does not meet the requirement to exceeds the requirement. The scores from each element are then added to create the school grade. Please note that a school that meets all law requirements will result in a school grade of 52, and a school that exceeds state requirements in every single area would receive a grade of 78. So this is not based on a 0 to 100 grading. This fall, each of our schools engaged their school safety, school climate team in completing the self-assessment for the time period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Tonight, I will provide with you the results of those scores. Our school scores range from 67 to 74. These scores reflect that our schools mark themselves consistently in either meets or exceeds requirements in many of the areas. And we believe that this depicts how we're more moving in a systemic manner as a district in our programming and procedures related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I'll briefly go through each of the core elements. Element one, the focus that they are grading themselves on is the actual HIB program approaches and initiatives. Element two is a reflection of trainings on the Board of Ed-approved HIV policy. All staff is trained on that to include even substitutes, both online as well.
Lisa? Lisa? I think she's frozen again. Lisa, you froze again, up to substitutes.
Okay. My entire Wi-Fi keeps going in and out here. I'm not sure why. Okay, so I apologize.
Okay.
So the element two is trainings on our Board of Ed-approved HIV policies. We provide both an online training as well as many in-person trainings. Element three looks at other staff instructions and training program. So this includes the minimum of the two hours of instruction in both HIB. Our district tends to provide more than two hours of instruction in that area. Element four is the curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills. Element five looks at our HIV personnel, mainly that every building does have an anti-bullying specialist as well as an anti-bullying coordinator for the district. Element six is school-level HIV incident reporting procedures, looking specifically how we implement those procedures and how we report them on a building-wide level. And then also, the element seven looks at our investigation procedures, how we actually go about completing and following all of the procedures in place and timelines and guidelines in investigating, and then how we go about actually reporting those findings, which looks at that reporting, everything from a staff member being able to report to a principal, all the way up to us reporting to the superintendent and to the Board of Ed. So those are the elements, and if you look, our final scores is Brunner, when tallying up all eight of those elements, Brunner had a score of 69, Cole's 73, Evergreen 68, McGinn's 69, School One had 73, Park 73, Tarrell 74, and the high school at 67. Again, this is a self-assessment, so how each school, going through that rubric, would feel that they are meeting each of these elements and criteria. Okay? Hopefully, I'm still...
Yeah, you're there.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Mora?
So just for clarification, Ms. Mora, all of our schools are within the range of passing? Yes, yes, all of our school... You know, our range is from 67 to 74. Just a meeting the expectation would be a 52. So we are, in each of those elements, scoring to a minimum of meeting, if not exceeding. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment from Ms. Mora or Mrs. Rabimbas? Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Rabimbas. Thank you, Ms. Mora, appreciate it.
So the next item on our instructional update, we are celebrating an amazing success of our coaching staff as well as our student athletes. Mr. Luke Peaty is here tonight, along with Barbara Joyner, to help us celebrate the wonderful record of the girls' tennis team. So I'm going to turn this part of the program over to Mr. Peaty. Hi, Luke.
Hello, how are you? Everyone hears me okay, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Yeah, this was an incredible season. Thank you so much for honoring them for their regional group championship. Like Dr. Mast, I want to start off by thanking just the assistant coach, Barbara Joyner, for her work on both the varsity and JV teams. At this point, we have like the best developmental program, I think, in any of the tennis teams in Union County, and she's the reason for that. So I'm lucky to have her as a partner in the program. So you understand kind of the magnitude of the team's achievements this year. We moved into the upper division of Union County again. The five teams we compete against in the shortened seasons, they've all won state championships. They're all perennial powers in the state. I looked it up. In the previous 10 seasons before this one, the Scotch Plains Girls Tennis Team had six wins and 62 losses against the teams that were in this division. This season, the girls were perfect 8-0 against these same teams. So they had 33% more wins this year than they had in the previous 10 years combined. We were really led by our singles players. It was kind of a legendary season for them. I've never heard of other teams even having the success they had. Anna Stuka is our first singles player. She's a junior. I believe her record overall in high school at first singles is 60 and 6. So she's been pretty incredible since she got here, and every year gets better. And that's the thing that other coaches notice about her, is that she's always working to get better, and where everyone else kind of stays the same, she's back a better, leveled better. Then we had, in singles, Dia and Didi Namwell. And I heard they were pretty good players coming in, and they were much better than that. Anna's toughest match all season at first singles was actually playing against Dia for the first singles, second singles match on the team. That was really the closest match either of them had all year. Didi, then, at third singles, she was probably the best third singles player in the state. So between them, they had 45 wins. The doubles teams really improved a lot throughout the season. At first doubles, we had Nikita Sahasra Budeh and Lucy Spitzer. They made the semifinals at Counties, and they were in every match against the best doubles teams in the state. And then, at second doubles at Counties, we had Joon Shim and Alora Manchin. I'm not saying her name right now. Majum Darah, sorry, Alora. So they hadn't started the season at second doubles. By the end of the season, they kind of solidified themselves there. They won all of their matches in the state tournament. And I think the big thing was just watching them have so much fun playing tennis. They were both kind of quiet and nervous at the beginning of the season, and to see them out there having fun, be aggressive, trying to hit their opponent every once in a while with the ball, it was really a lot of fun to see by the end of the season. So when we got to the state tournament, they really tore through the state tournament, winning almost all their individual matches. The first match was against Cranford on a cold night in the middle of the rainy weather. And then Cold Snack was on this, not as bad as the day before, but like a 48-degree day, which is not good for tennis. And they just didn't let anything bother them. I think that was really the difference between us and everyone else this season. Then we got to the regional final, like the most beautiful day for tennis ever, and beat Middletown South. I think a couple of things really show this team as being different than others. The one disappointment they had was not being able to play against Milburn, who is the traditional power in the state. And they really felt like they could beat them, and they were like, no, I want to play Milburn. I want to play Milburn, but in this year, we couldn't. Just other times, I remember at Counties, someone from another team was crying because of a bad call. And I remember Dia sounding exactly like Tom Hanks saying, "There's no crying in tennis." And it was just great. And what's really exciting, six of seven are coming back next year. So getting Milburn is definitely a possibility. I'm so thankful for these girls that really... Other coaches are jealous of Coach Joyner and who we get to coach. Everyone else talks about like how hard it is coaching girls tennis and all the headaches, and we have none. We just have great group of players, JV varsity. They want to play tennis. They come out and work hard. And there doesn't need to be the threat, oh, you can't miss practice. They want to practice. They want to be out there getting better. So I think both Coach Joyner and I are really excited about the prospects for this future and really happy with what they were able to accomplish this year. So thank you. I'm not sure what happens from here.
Does Ms. Joyner want to say anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you can. Luke said it all, quite frankly. These girls are awesome. It's been wonderful to work with them through the years and see their growth. And as they go on to, I coach JV, and I do help out a lot with varsity. I always tell these girls, I hate to lose them, but I don't want to stop them from getting to the top of the game, which is varsity. So they played an awesome season this year, and they deserve all the accolades that they're getting this year. So congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
Dr. McGarry, were you at the climactic moment in this season?
No, he's crying.
You're muted.
I was, and I wanted to share the reflection I have upon the relationship I saw between these two coaches and their players and the team was really something very special that I think they're going to carry forward into next season when we will clearly beat Milburn.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Okay, I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas the 2020-2021 Scotch Plains-Famwood High School Girls Varsity Tennis Team had a remarkable 2020 fall season and was led by junior captain Anna Stuka, who posted an impressive 15-0 record. And whereas the 2020-2021 Scotch Plains-Famwood High School Girls Varsity Junior and Junior Varsity Tennis Team closed out October with a second-place finish in the Union County Tournament at Hubstein Field in Plainfield with individual county champions at first singles Anna Stuka, second singles Dia Namwell, and third singles Didi Namwell. And whereas, for the first time since 1996, the Scotch Plains-Famwood High School Girls Varsity Team has earned a postseason championship and shall be known as the Central East Region B Champions with a perfect 11-0 record. And whereas the 2020-2021 Scotch Plains-Famwood High School Girls Varsity exhibited outstanding talent, dedication, and teamwork throughout the season and was led by head coach Luke Peaty and assistant coach Barbara Joyner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Famwood Board of Education recognizes and congratulates the 2020-2021 Scotch Plains-Famwood High School Girls Varsity and their coaches for their outstanding achievements and wishes them continued success in all future endeavors. Congratulations, everyone. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Coach Joyner, and thank you, Coach Peaty, for your wonderful words, and congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Mast, for the intro. Okay, then that brings us to our third portion of the instructional update, which is the strategic goals for 2020-2021.
Erin, can I just congratulate the young ladies? Can I take a second?
Of course.
I just want to thank, this is our, I think, most of the board members' favorite part of the meeting, when we get to see our students doing amazing accomplishments. And I just want to thank the young ladies for coming tonight and the coaches. And I was really inspired hearing the coaches speak about their appreciation for each other and also for the athletes. And I think that you really truly set a winning tone for these athletes. And that is so important. It's not just them getting out and playing. It's really the tone that you set as coaches. And so I want to appreciate and recognize you for that and just honor the young ladies for, you know, every difficult thing that's happening in the world right now. I think it makes your accomplishments shine even brighter. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Soriani.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? All right, and thank you also, Dr. McGarry, for your kind words as well. Okay, then, Dr. Mast, this brings us to Instructional Update 3 for this evening. You're muted.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I am presenting the district annual goals for the 2020-2021 school year. And I've shared these goals with the board. These goals reflect a deepening of our work in the current strategic plan. That sunset in 2020, so we have a little time. It not only reflects the deepening of our work, but also how our work is taking place during a pandemic. We will be creating a new plan and a new strategic plan in the spring of 2021. So that will be coming. So here is the document that I've shared with the board. At this point, it is still a draft document, but always we have an anchor goal that reflects the work that we do around student achievement. In this case, it's often reflected on New Jersey standardized test data. So from there, we also have goal one, which in our current strategic plan was health and wellness. And for for this year, we are focusing on equity. We have a number of subgoals within the equity area as well as wellness. So in in the equity area, we have formed two subcommittees of the board where we have the board focused on very specific action plans. And we have also developed a task force that brings community members into the work along with students to sit on that task force. We have established a position within the school district that's focused on diversity and equity, which is one of our student assistant counselors. And we are looking to begin the work to have our own pipeline for for future teachers where we are looking to diversify our teaching staff so that the diversity of our student population, they will also see in the in the teachers. One way that we want to do that is really find a way to tap future teachers to communicate with them, the importance of of the work in education and to foster relationships with them along with our teaching staff so they have early mentors in the work. We're looking to partner with county colleges and state universities to see if students who are interested in being future teachers can take dual enrollment courses. And we are at the beginning stages of this work. But our hope is that as students enter their their college careers and they are interested in teaching, that they will come back and they will substitute for us on college breaks as well as when they get to do field work, that they would come and work with us too. And when they're ready to teach, we would be very happy to be able for them to consider if Scotch Plains Fanwood is is the place for them to serve. Additionally, we are going to continue to develop and deliver and assess and assess lessons and curricular resources that address the Amistad law and the new state statute that requires instruction on the political, economic and social contributions of persons with disability and lesbian, gay, bisexual and transgender people for the middle and high school students. Some of the work that we're doing in wellness is to designate a student assistant specialist for each elementary school. This is the first year that we have five student assistant specialists, so they have each been assigned to their own school. Along with that work, we're prioritizing social emotional learning through professional development and curriculum related initiatives. And we are developing a structure and process for the articulation of the P twelve Counseling Student Assistance Program, where we're taking an overview of our counseling services to to see, you know, how we could continue to support it moving forward. In our current strategic plan, we have a real world connection across the curriculum. And this year, our main focus is on technology. The pandemic has given us an opportunity to have a one to one program with our computers. So much of, much of our work is around that one to one. Not only the fact that the students have them, but how we could leverage it for the best teaching and learning. Additionally, by having the one to one, in order to maintain that, we need to have different financial forecasting moving forward, that that's going to have a different budgetary input. It's going to impact our budget planning differently moving forward. Goal three is professional development. We continue to provide professional development. We certainly had a focus on helping people be prepared to teach both in the virtual model and the hybrid model. We have been focused on providing social and emotional learning lessons within our curriculum. We've also been focused on equity with matters of diversity, equity and inclusion. Within that, it is also bias training. We are also continuing to build our arts integration experiences across the curriculum as an approach to teaching which deepens students' learning and learning and engagement through collaborating multiple subject areas with the arts. And you know, there is an intersection of all of this work in the goals. So for example, the the professional development work also intersects with the equity work. In our current strategic plan, there's a community parent engagement. This year, we're very much focused on our communication. We have been working with a consultant. There's currently a survey that we've asked people to respond. The the response rate has been very good to date. And from from this work, we are going to have a comprehensive comprehensive communication action plan. You know, last year was the the first launch of a new website and we want to continue to monitor that to make sure that it is accessible and a valuable source for information. And in addition to our community parent engagement, we have done quite a bit of pandemic planning. We've had different groups, both at the building level and the district level, put together our our restart plan. In addition, we have identified a head nurse who has been very important in in the work around health and safety during during these times. We have engaged the expertise of an environmental hygienist to determine the best practices in maintaining a health, maintaining health, healthy classrooms and workspaces. And we are also continuing to to establish protocols regarding the cleaning and maintenance of our buildings and to have a specific checklist. So we know that everything is being done to keep our rooms and buildings safe. And finally, we have completed a thorough assessment of the district's ventilation and HVAC needs. And we are going to identify next steps that will be reflected in our long range facilities plans based on that work. So that's, that's where we are with the the goals that we're focused on now for this year.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Mast? I know this is a work in progress, so I did look at them, but I didn't fine tooth comb read them.
You have time.
Williams.
Thank you. So the pandemic planning, I know that's new, so thank you for implementing that. Designating a district wide head nurse, is that going to be someone new or is that someone already in our district?
So Lisa Rabimbus, if you could speak to that, because that person has been identified and her work, as you could imagine, is always evolving every day.
So over the summer before we opened for the new school year, we interviewed and selected Mrs. Tomasulo as our head nurse for the district. And it is above her duties as the school nurse of Evergreen School. And she's been working with Dr. Mast, our school, our other school nurses, the local department of health, our school physician, Dr. Kay, and our administrative team in not just working on the restart plan, but updating and Mr. Petuco, I might add, updating our restart plan, working on our daily screenings for the staff and the students and coordinating our efforts in regard to contact tracing, COVID planning, health and safety overall, everything that you can imagine from sharing information about washing hands to safely coming into school every day. So Mrs. Tomasulo has already hit the ground running and has been doing a great deal in regard to supporting our district and in maintaining and getting ready for the students to be here and to having a safe environment for everyone.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you for the answer, Mrs. Rabimbus. Thank you for reading through the goals, Dr. Mast. We'll be fine tuning them soon. Then that will conclude our instructional update if there are no further questions. Okay. Then this brings us to the next next portion of our meeting. Excuse me, next week, November nineteenth, the annual audit for twenty nineteen twenty will be presented by Kathy Mantel of Nissavacia for an instructional update. So at this portion for public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. And in accordance with the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools bylaw zero one six four zero one six five, the meeting will be open for fifteen minutes for public comments. There's a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. And then when you are in the queue, please state your full name and the town in which you reside, once it is your turn. And please note, board members cannot respond to individual concerns with students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed with the superintendent's office. So at this time, Ms. Broadbent, do we have someone ready for a public comment?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Craig Peskin.
Dr. Kulikowski, Ms. Broadbent, if I may, just before we get to the first set of comments.
Sure.
Just a reminder, I see that we have quite a few attendees and quite a few hands up already for a chance to speak. Just a reminder to the public, for those who have not been to a lot of these, there are several public comment periods, three public comment periods throughout the meeting. Each period is limited to fifteen minutes, but give or take, given how some of these go. So if you don't get caught in the first public comment period, there will be another chance later in the meeting. Just another point of order, each person is limited to three minutes. I will be keeping time. I'm rather lenient when you are approaching or hit your three minute, I will just remind you to please finish up your comments. Also, to the extent you have any questions for the board, the board is not obligated to respond to those questions. This is a public comment period. Time for you as a member of the public to share your thoughts with the board, either on something on the agenda or just something having to do with the district in general. That being said, if you do have a question and are for some reason expecting an answer, please don't pause. Your three minutes will continue to run. Please state all of your questions, make all your comments. And when you're finished, the board will respond if they're going to respond appropriately. Thank you, Dr. Kulikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Robin? Robin, I can't hear you. If you have someone.
Craig Peskin, Dr. Kulikowski.
Thank you.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please state your name and the town in which you reside.
This is Craig Peskin and I reside in Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
I was also a member of the district restart committee. While I know that we can't keep schools closed forever, I think that the timing around opening the high school and middle school to sixth through twelfth grade on November sixteenth is horrible. It may have made sense when it was announced in October, but it does not make good sense today. The virus is raging in many parts of the U.S. And in New Jersey, we're seeing very troubling numbers. On October eighth, when the school opening announcement was emailed to parents, there were six hundred thirty seven COVID hospitalizations in New Jersey. Yesterday, there were one thousand eight hundred twenty seven. That's a one hundred eighty seven percent increase since the decision was made to open our schools. Yesterday, there were over one thousand eight hundred COVID deaths in the U.S. And if you think back to March, during that first seven days we were home when the district was closed, there were only three hundred fifty deaths for that entire week. Earlier this week, Dr. Scott Gottlieb, the former commissioner of the FDA, said that the epidemic is about to explode and that we are in for some hard months ahead. And earlier today, Mayor Bill de Blasio announced that the New York City rate of positive COVID tests was two point six percent and that he was going to close schools if it went above three percent. The positivity rate in New Jersey was twelve percent on Sunday, four times the New York City threshold. In New Jersey, we're starting to see some districts closing. Yesterday, the Montclair School District's plan to shift to hybrid learning was put on hold because of too much community spread. Seton Hall University just announced that it is going remote for the rest of the semester. Starting next week, East Brunswick is abandoning hybrid learning until January eleventh. Locally, Westfield High School has opened and closed and has not been able to reopen and is now virtual until at least November thirtieth. And right here in our own district, McGinn Elementary was unable to open on Monday because of COVID cases. On top of everything I've just stated, college students start coming home for Thanksgiving as early as this weekend. And younger siblings will be exposed to these college students that are returning from all over the country. I'm asking Dr. Mast and the members of the BOE to reconsider the decision to open our schools to sixth through twelfth grade starting next week. Governor Murphy's not going to make the call unless it gets a lot worse. He's up for reelection next November, so the ball is in your court. I hope that the superintendent, school administrators and the BOE will be talking in the coming days about the risks of opening the school at this point in the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Peskin, as well as the facts and figures that you've brought towards us. Amy, did you have a question, Ms. Boroff?
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Broadbent, do we have our next participant?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Vicki Dembeck.
Thank you.
Hi, Vicki, if you please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. My name is Vicki Dembeck. I live in Scotch Plains. I have four kids, two who have graduated and two who are still in school, one in the high school, he's a senior, and one in fifth grade. Before I start, I would actually like to thank you for moving us to the hybrid model. My fifth grader started this past Monday and as a parent, it was wonderful to see him so happy and engaged and connected. I have not seen this since early March and it means a lot to me as a mom, so thank you. My first question is regarding the technology that we're using right now. I know my son and many of the kids his age, mostly with the younger kids, is having a lot of issues right now with the Google meets. He gets kicked off almost daily, sometimes multiple times. Most of the time, he can rectify the situation himself. Sometimes he's out for ten to fifteen minutes and has to email his teacher to get an invitation to get back in. My concern about this is that it's very distracting for him and for his classmates as well as for the teacher. I would like to make sure that you know about this and I would like to understand what you are doing to address this problem. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional. My second question is, I would like to know by a show of hands from the board members, how many of you have kids currently in the district? Okay, thank you. It means a lot to me. I need to understand that. It's very important to me and I think you will understand where I'm coming from as I move forward. As a parent, this situation has been unbelievably stressful and emotional, as you can see. Education is a priority in my house. My husband and I both agree that education is the most important thing in our kids' lives right now. All four of my kids are great students. It is so heartbreaking to watch your child digress and disconnect from school, both intellectually and emotionally, particularly my fifth grader. I need to know that the people who are making decisions on behalf of my children's education are feeling my pain. I need to know that they are empathetic to what my kids and I are going through. It is a very different situation for those of us that are living this with our children and for those that are hearing about it. This is why I would like to understand how many of you are living with this and living through this like the rest of us parents. My third question is, again, I'd like to thank you for moving us to the hybrid model. As I said, my son was so happy on Monday and Tuesday. I haven't seen him like that since early March, and it meant a lot to me. But by yesterday, Wednesday, he was right back to being disengaged and sad. These kids need to be in school five days a week. If we can do two days, we can do five days. My third question is, when, what are you guys doing right now to move us towards a five-day model? I didn't hear anything in the strategic plan in terms of timing. I only heard things planning for more virtual, and I would like to know what you're doing to move us towards that end. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Demback.
Karen, I just feel like I have to say for the record that just because we have kids in the district, that, you know, everyone has different opinions about whether kids should be hybrid, virtual, in school, and we are all living through the challenges and difficulties of virtual learning. But I have two younger kids in the district, and I don't necessarily, you know, want the public to think that my having kids in virtual school right now means that, that, you know, I am on board with one opinion or the other. I think I just want to make that clear.
We're all here for the benefit of the children, to keep everybody safe and to keep education going.
Absolutely.
Whether or not our child is currently in the school or has already gone through the school, we're all doing this. We're all here. We all ran for the board because we are concerned, and we want to do everything for the children and for the teachers.
And I think, as we've all shared as board members before, while we understand the challenges of learning virtually and, you know, absolutely the need for kids to be engaged and for their social, emotional well-being, we also need to understand seriousness of the pandemic and the risk to our students and our staffs being in school. So it's not as simple as that you have kids in school and you feel that they need to be in school five days a week. I just want to be clear about that. Thank you.
That's an excellent point, Ms. Sorianni. And thank you, Vicki, also for letting us know that there are some technology programs. You know, we have to be informed because, you know, the instrument is, you know, the piece of equipment is given to the student. And, you know, the internet is out there. If you are having a problem, we're not going to know unless we're told. There's no way for us to get feedback unless we get a phone call or an email letting us know that there is a problem. So thank you for that.
And if I could add, you know, the reason why we have in our restart plan the hybrid model is that we need to socially distance. So the reason why we have hybrid is because it reduces the number of students and we're able to approach and not always successfully keeping students six feet apart. If we were able to bring more students back and have that social distancing, we would. We do recognize that virtual learning isn't ideal. We also recognize that the hybrid learning is not ideal, but it does give kids, you know, the human interaction with their peers and their teachers to some extent. We recognize in a heartbreaking way how difficult this pandemic is. We carry that on our shoulders. And whether we have kids in the district, we're all advocates of kids. We're involved in education because we know that schools make a difference in kids' life. So it is through the lens of risk management, it is through the lens of health and safety first. And everyone on this screen and all of the teachers and all of the parents want the same thing. We want school back the way it was pre-pandemic. But we can't just do that by snapping our fingers. We have to do it safely.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, do we have another participant?
Yes, Dr. Kulakowski, Sarah August.
Thank you.
Sarah, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Hi, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. I am, yes, hi Amy. One, I'd like to thank Craig.
Excuse me. Can you please state the town in which you reside?
I am from Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
I'm very sorry. I want to thank Craig Peskin for what he said. I highly agree. On the other hand, I'm also a teacher in Milburn who teaches some of those tennis players, and I'm very sorry that my students did that to us, and I have rooting for Scotch Plains, I promise. But I do want to, I mean, I came here tonight as a real parent who represents equality and anti-racism and literary diversity in our district. We've been working with you consistently. You have continued the progress, and you are working so hard on doing so, and I do appreciate that. I'm looking to see how you are asking teachers while they're in hybrid, while we're home, while we're all working ridiculous hours as teachers, what can they do to add some of this diversity into their teaching? Are you giving them resources? Are you encouraging them? How is the curriculum being developed and added upon even while we're home struggling with this? As a teacher, teaching The Great Gatsby in Milburn High School, I am working to include this each and every day. I'm working, teaching Goodbye Columbus, trying to add it in, you know? I'm trying each and every day to find ways to add diversity and understand different religions and ethnicities and races and to try and teach my students from all over, all over, you know? And I wanted to know what you're doing to encourage the teachers in Scotch Plains to do that as well. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. August. We will be having a curriculum report in a few minutes. Ms. Broadbent, can we please have our next participant?
Dr. Kulakowski, Danielle Wildstein.
Thank you, Robin.
Ms. Wildstein, please unmute yourself.
Please state your name and the town in which you reside.
Danielle Wildstein, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
So now that schools have started reopening for general ed, I was wondering if you could speak to the specific criteria you use in the process in determining what happens when there is a positive case, whether it's in the community, for a staff member, a student, or a teacher, or whether it happens in school? I know we've heard some generalities around that in the past, and was just wondering who makes that decision? Is it the Department of Health? Is it the state? Is it Dr. Mast? Is it Dr. Mast with the Board of Ed? You know, as we've seen with McGinn, you know, the letter that went out, there was one staff member or teacher that was positive, and so the entire school shut down for three weeks, not two weeks, but three weeks. So is it every time there's a positive case, whether it happens in school or outside of school, is our school is going to be closed down for three weeks? Is it two independent cases that have to be considered for shutting down the school? What's the difference between shutting down a school versus quarantining a class? It would be great now that schools are opening, that parents got some specifics around that. And I know that there is, you know, guidelines that are followed, and maybe it's a case-by-case basis. But some more direction around that would be helpful because, yes, numbers are absolutely rising in New Jersey. We keep hearing that. There's also tons of research out there abroad and in the U.S. that have said that schools are safe and that it is very, very rare for children to be spreading it within schools. So I just want to make sure that we're making decisions based on research and science and medicine and not based on fear. Because as Ms. Demback said earlier, education is so, so critical. I know all of you know that. But I just want to say that again. I had such joy today dropping my son off at school for the first time since March. He ran to the door and could not wait to get in. And I am petrified to know what's going to happen come Monday, when he's back to the hybrid model, when he literally shuts off. He cannot learn virtually, and it has nothing to do with this teacher. She is a saint. She is amazing. It is just not working for him. So do I just chalk up this year as a year of him not learning anything because he can't connect? I understand the pandemic. I understand we all want safety. But I'm just trying to understand, and many parents, I'm sure, are trying to understand, what is the criteria here? And is it based on fear, or is it based on science and research and good thought behind what we're doing for these children to keep them in school in-person learning? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wildstein.
Dr. Kulakowski, if I may, I can address part of that comment. Thank you. So just to clarify, certainly the state of New Jersey and the governor has the authority to shut down schools as they did in March of last school year, earlier this calendar year. Takes my breath away to say that because 2020 has been the longest year in human history, I think. So the state certainly has the authority to do that. The Department of Health technically has the authority to do that as well. Generally speaking, how it's been working since schools have reopened this fall throughout the state is that each school, the superintendent of that district will consult with the local Department of Health and the State Department of Health whenever there is a positive case of someone who's been in contact with the school. And each Department of Health will give their guidance and their thoughts to the superintendent. But ultimately, it's the superintendent's decision as to whether or not to close school. Again, that's in consultation with the local Board of Health. To date, there have not been local orders from the Department of Health to close schools, but it is, they're giving out their recommendations based off of their opinion, based on information about spread, contact tracing, and things of the like in terms of whether to shut a school and for how long. Thank you.
Dr. Kulakowski, if I may add as well?
Yes, Mrs. Rabembis, go right ahead.
It's important to know that there are a variety of people involved in all of these decisions regarding closing schools, quarantining. It's not just one person by themselves. So when there's, to walk you through the process a little, when there's one positive case, the school nurses, the school nurse in that building interviews the person who has tested positive and secures as much information to begin contact tracing and working with the local Department of Health and our head school nurse. Depending on the information that person gives and what contacts that person gives, we then make our next decision with the local Department of Health, the head school nurse, and our superintendent, and our school principal. So in various situations, it could be as limited as a person was tested positive on a day where they were not at work. Let's say it's a staff member, and they tested positive and they hadn't been at work, let's say, during teachers convention. And they did not expose anyone in the school to COVID, but they tested positive. So on a simple level, that person is isolated at home and quarantined. In another scenario, a person who is at work can test positive and has a close contact that is defined by the guidelines from the Department of Health. The people in close contact with that person who tests positive are contacted and are then quarantined. So if you go on a simple level, if I were in close contact with a group of people, let's say five people, those five people would be quarantined for 14 days. So depending on who those five people are, it could keep the system going, and we would be all back in, well, everyone except the five people and I, who were quarantining, would be back at work and going along and doing what they need to do. In a difficult scenario, it could be a person who has contact with five people, and those five people supervise children in some way. And we need substitutes for those five people, whether they're teachers, aides, anything like that. And then we're looking at the decision of, do we have enough substitutes to cover for those five people? And what will be the quality of 14 days of those students having substitutes for that length of time that people will be quarantined? So that's a little bit of the decision-making that goes behind the scenes. When a COVID case comes to us, it could be very simple to no contact within the district, to very complicated with multiple contacts within the district. And I think the hardest piece for, in all of this, for the staff, for the parents, for the community at large, is there are confidentiality laws that we do have to follow in regard to COVID-positive cases. So when a COVID-positive case happens, everyone wants to know as much information as possible, as quickly as possible. But the person who is COVID-positive has the right to privacy. And if we divulge too much information, it could identify that person and could breach the confidentiality of that person. So in the balance of community safety, we can only share a certain amount of information because we have to maintain the confidentiality of that person. But I think it's important to know that as a whole, these decisions are complicated and involve a number of people on various levels, both within the school, at the district level, and at the community level. And we are in constant contact through our school head nurse and Dr. Mast as well in calling the local Department of Health to monitor numbers in Scotch Plains and Fanwood specifically, not just within the state. So that is something that is ongoing and that we're reviewing. But on a simple level, to close up, there are guidelines from the Department of Health that are on their website, that is on their website, that states depending on the color of New Jersey in regard to yellow or orange or red, that determines what a school does on a simple level when you're looking globally. But ultimately, it is a local decision if the governor isn't shutting down schools and going virtual and encompassing all of those pieces that I described.
And thank you, Mrs. Rabembis. I just want to address two points. So there is somewhat of a flow chart, though it is also very unique to each case. In the case of McGinn, it wasn't just one positive case and we closed school. There was an impact on staffing, and there was also, you know, there was also a community reoccurrence at multiple levels of COVID-positive cases. And as Mrs. Rabembis said, considerations, you have to take under consideration whether it's a first contact or a second contact, and sometimes that takes time. The reason why you go two weeks or three weeks, it really depends on the spread in that location. I don't make the decision by myself at all, and I don't make the decision out of fear. I make the decision out of what's safe and through the lens of a risk management, but I make it in consultation with the Department of Health, with our nursing team, with the administrators. And there's nothing that you want to do, there's nothing that anyone wants to do to go to the place of closing a school. I mean, the McGinn staff was so excited and so disappointed that that had to happen. But it was clear to people besides me that that needed to be the step. So these are hard decisions. They're exhausting. They take hours of communications. We're working 24/7 to keep schools open, to keep the virtual teaching as good as it can be. I agree with the parents that it's not adequate. I agree that hybrid adds something, but it also loses something because then you have our teachers multitasking. This is all very hard, and the way we're going to get through it is if we do it together. And I understand that it's hard, but it's also opportunities to help our students persevere, to help them understand that there are disruptions in life. But we will get back to normal and to keep that hope and to keep using it as an opportunity to learn rather than to be in despair. Thank you, Dr. Mast.
Dr. Kulakowski.
Yes, Dr. McGarry.
This also seems like a good moment for a public service announcement. As we begin to open our schools more and more with hybrid, that, you know, protecting one another really requires everybody's commitment, parents. And we talk a lot about transparency, and we need parents to be as transparent with us as possible during this time and to let our school nurses, who, a shout out to them, are working harder than ever in their careers probably, to keep everybody safe. So, you know, it's a real collective commitment that we all need to have to keeping our community safe. So thanks to parents for taking on that added burden and responsibility and helping us do so.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. Ms. Broadbent, are there any other participants at this time?
Yes, Dr. Kulakowski.
Okay.
Connie Nervy. Hi Connie, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Connie, when you unmute, please give a Connie, when you unmute, please give us your full name and your town which you reside, please. Connie, we can't hear you, you need to unmute, please.
Dr. Kulakowski and and Robin, I think we might be having an issue with Ms. Nervy's comment.
Can can anyone hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you, sir.
Sorry, my name is Matthew Nervy. I'm a sophomore at the high school, I live in Scotch Plains. And I'd just like to thank everybody for letting me speak. But I wanted to talk about the uncertainty of like basketball season and winter sports. And so I just think that I can speak for all of like my teammates and myself that this season is very, very important to us and we understand that there's like going to be a lot of sacrifices that we have to make just to have a season like I know that me and my teammates will all sacrifice things like we won't see any of our other friends and we'll always be wearing masks whenever we have to and take all the precautions. And I think that it's just really important to have the season because it's not really just playing basketball. It's really like a support system for us and it keeps us healthy and we all look forward to this every year. And I just, I know that we all understand the circumstances this year and that the situation is always changing and all of that, but I just think that we want the opportunity for the season this year to not get canceled preemptively and just we can, you know, we'll be flexible with anything that we can change throughout the season just for the opportunity to play like even the littlest bit of flame that will all just be happy with that. And I just think overall that this pandemic has taken away a lot from us and we don't want it to take away this. And I would just appreciate your guys' support and thank you for letting me share my perspective.
Mr. Nervy, thank you for speaking. I you know, originally we had Connie Nervy. Can you please give us your full name and the town?
Yeah, sorry, I'm Matthew Nervy. I live in Scotch Plains and I'm a sophomore at the high school.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate you coming on. Did your mom want to talk also or this was for you?
I don't really need to talk. I think he said it really well. Thank you.
And that's fine, you know, you you're welcome. All students are welcome to participate in Board of Ed meetings as well and I appreciate you coming on and sharing your feelings and you know, we really want all the sports teams to play as well. You know, we've attended the the swimming meets, we've attended the football games, we've seen other games and we want you to play too. So we just please, you know, follow the guidelines and and as long as everybody participates adequately, you know, there's no reason to shut down, but we're going by the guidelines that Dr. Mast had stated a little while ago is, you know, we can't say yes if everybody in in town is is coming up positive, but you know, we're not shutting it because we want to shut it. We want you to play too. We appreciate you participating in the public comment portion of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew.
Dr. Kulakowski, we have time for one more comment in this period.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Robin, do we have another caller that we can have?
Yes, Dr. Kulakowski, Jaden Carter.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Jaden, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Um, hi, my name is Jaden Carter and I'm a junior here at SPF and I play basketball and I first off want to say I'm grateful for
Can you just tell me where you reside?
Scotch Plains. First off, I just want to say that I'm grateful for the lights you guys put up at the football field. But now I'm here, I'm I'm here to talk about what should leave on my mind, now like you guys to hear what I have to say before you make your decision. Um, sports are a huge part of who who people are. And some people attend school just to play their sports in hopes to play in college. I'm in fact one of these people and I know many others. With you guys opening the school in four days, you will have over 100 people in the building, which I feel is unsafe compared to the people, which will only be compared to the 20 to 25 people in an enclosed area. I feel if you, I feel if you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Take your time.
I feel if you open the school in four days, it will lead to more cases and us shutting down and leading to more problems in our community rather than just letting us play. I'm just begging y'all to let us have a season, even if that means having no fans, whatever else you feel is necessary to keep us safe. We're willing to do and we'll make that sacrifice as a team, as Matt said. Um, I think we're just all eager to play and just have fun as a team and as a family and I just hope you guys realize that.
And which team are you on?
Oh, the basketball team.
Basketball, thank you. Well, Jaden, thank you for your comments and thank you for participating in the public comment portion of the Board of Ed meeting. I appreciate you taking the time. And as I just told Matthew, we're very happy that you are getting to play when you can play when it's safe. We want you to play. We don't want to stop sports. We didn't want to stop the play last year because we appreciate going to the events. We'd like to see all the students fully engaged and you know, we feel for you. We want you to play.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug, are we on time now?
Sorry about that. We have about one minute left, so your your discretion, Madam President.
Okay, Robin, if there's someone ready, we can take them.
Sure, Dr. Kulakowski, Amanda Hughes.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Hughes, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Okay, I want to thank Lisa first. That was really very good explanation and communication. Sorry. Sorry.
Amanda?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you you were saying Lisa and then you cut off.
Oh, I said first I wanted to thank Lisa for the excellent communication and answer to what Danielle had said earlier because oftentimes we don't get an answer and I really appreciate that we're getting more answers today. So thank you for that. If it can be communicated in an email or a letter to all parents where we don't have to be asking, that would be amazing. Dr. Mast had said risk management and kids having two days hybrid as being beneficial, but the people who are getting COVID, who are spreading COVID are not getting it from school. It's from the outside activities that's the issue. I have firsthand seen all this. I saw it at Starbucks the other day with 30 kids outside hanging out without masks on, just hanging out together. I've seen it a lot of teenagers, of other people. I've seen it with adults. I've seen so many people hanging out close together without masks, not about school. In school, they're sanitizing more, they're being super safe. So I agree with Danielle that so much is based on fear. I think that I would love for that to change. I know that was stated that it's not based on fear, but we can each have our opinions. Obviously, numbers are going up as more and more people are testing. I totally agree that I would love to all be able to work together on this. But I think unless things are being communicated a bit more, and when I say a bit more, I mean a lot more because right now, there's really no communication to any of us about what's going on and why unless we are on these meetings. If we can have a better communication both ways, then of course we can work together on this because I wrote notes through that button that you asked us to. No response still. You guys told us to go through that button, no response. And my second point is right now, I've noticed with the middle schooler, there's a lack of focus on certain things that I really think the teachers should be noticing. The teachers are fantastic, but there are certain things that are happening that I don't know if they realize that are very important. For instance, Kahoot is a game being played, which is wonderful because it's a fun way for people to learn. However, when someone's naming themselves instead of their name, something like my mom is gay, that should not be acceptable and the teacher should see that, should notice that and make a very clear statement that that person, that is not acceptable and that will not be tolerated. Certain things are being missed because it's virtual. And imagine some that person's parent was gay. That is bullying. That is not to be tolerated. So I want there to be a recognition that certain things are being missed virtually that wouldn't be in person and that that has to be looked at. That happened last year virtually also where my son was sent a pornography link. Nobody noticed. He didn't know what it was. He clicked on it. Guess what happened? Whole family discussion. These things have to be noticed. So those are two different points. And I get emotional about that because that's not a conversation I needed to have with a sixth grader.
Ma'am, ma'am, that is your time. If you could just wrap up your comments.
And I just want to ask
I didn't, that was it.
Miss, miss, where did that Kahoot game play be played that you saw this?
Where? It's virtual school.
During the school lesson, during the lecture time with the with the
That was the student's name that he created or she created. It was a boy, I believe, but created for themselves because they can put a nickname for themselves and they can't spell out gay because it's Kahoot doesn't allow, but you say G A E. So my mom is gay instead of the person's name. And I I just want you guys to know this.
This was a sixth grader, you said? So so
Can I, can we just remind people though that things happen day to day, you know, on virtual, on in school buildings? And I think we had a discussion last meeting that if something happens at the building level or within a classroom, you know, I just always like to remind people that the board is a policymaking and a and a budget overseeing body and if people see things that happen day to day, it is not the role of the board to to it's actually unethical for the board to to step into the day to day functioning of of you know, what what is happening within a specific classroom. If people, I really encourage parents because it is a challenging time right now, obviously, and Dr. Mast said before that teachers, Dr. Mast did, was very transparent right now about the fact that teachers are trying to notice what's going on at home with kids virtually and in the classroom with kids in the classroom. Their attention is going in multiple directions and it's very challenging for them. But if someone notices something that is happening at the building level, they should be bringing this up with the teacher or the building principal. I just want to remind people that that's the case now as it as it always has been.
And certainly the teacher would want to hear that and take direct action, certainly.
Yes, and and I, that's why I was asking if that Kahoot was part of a class or something else because I've never heard of it unfortunately. And if there is something that is not right, then yes, the parent should be contacting the teacher and or the building principal so that it can be looked after.
So Dr. Kulakowski, Kahoot is is, you know, a a very popular program and and students are very motivated to to use it as a learning tool and
My son plays Kahoot in in his
And I could certainly see, you know, how it it could go awry with the nickname and I think Mrs. Sariani, you're absolutely correct. The first place to go with that and it would be very helpful is to the teacher. I I'm sure it'd be addressed right there, but I I'm sorry to hear that that, you know, a student made a poor choice. And that would, you know, that would that would require an intervention, certainly. The the other piece that that was mentioned is that the button on the website that you were encouraged to use it and every question that came in was was answered. So I'm not sure why that response didn't get back to you. I I do have a record of of our response. So please give my office a call tomorrow and I I will forward the the response to you just the same, but it seems like you know, we're we're having some type of disconnect in our communication and I I do I do know that we will work best if if you recognize that I am not trying to avoid communicating with anyone. And as someone said before, we might not be of the same opinion. I am not making any decisions from fear, but you might think I am. And the best way that we could get to the truth is 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 to talk. So please call my office and I will show you the response that I did answer and I I could talk to you more about my decision making not being based on fear, but being based on facts and science and health and safety.
Thank you, Dr. Biz. I was going to ask you about the questions. I know usually you get back to everybody very rapidly from those questions. So that's why I was quite surprised that something didn't get a response.
Well, thank you for that compliment, Dr. Kulakowski. There was a time where it was very difficult because it was a tsunami of communication that I've never seen in my life. And I was doing my best, but clearly it was, it it wasn't, it wasn't quite adequate. I needed to to learn a new way to to swim, but I think I'm there. I think everyone who who reaches out to me, they 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 do do get a response. And if you don't, you know, it's an oversight. Perhaps your email gets buried in my box. That happens and I feel I feel terrible if it does. So then just call my office, please. Because I am not avoiding you. I am trying to be very transparent and you know, again, the most important thing is we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mast, and thank you for your comments. That will close the public comment portion of this this public comment portion of the the meeting. There are other opportunities later in the meeting for more public comments. So next we'll go to committee reports and we have several committee reports. So I'm going to go down the list tonight and ask for community relations first if possible.
Okay.
On November 4th and it actually was not a very involved meeting this time. What we did discuss was a scope survey that went out to the parents and the staff and the computer and the community on November 2nd. And as of Tuesday, November 3rd, we had the family surveys, we had 405, the staff surveys, 176, and the community survey, 19. And so far, there's been some positive comments coming in so far and that really our hope is that we get both positive and negative. So we can be more informed on how we move forward because we we would really love people to really just be as brutally honest as they can be. We we can take it, but we really want to know. And our next meeting is December 2nd.
Okay, does anybody have any questions from Mrs. Brody?
I'd rather they be honest rather than brutally honest, but
All right, thank you, Ms. Brody. Curriculum next, please.
Okay, mine is going to be longer than Deb's. I'm sorry, I'll try to speak quickly, but our curriculum meetings are always chock full of wonderful information. So my first agenda item is a collaborative project that I wanted to report out about about the University of Pennsylvania's Graduate School of Education is collaborating with one of our science teachers, Lauren D. Nicola, and Lauren came to discuss this project. So I'll read a little bit about it. Okay, the project is an initiative through the University of Pennsylvania. It is supporting students epistemic practices with scientific systems. The the first part of the project was called Biograph. And it was a partnership between researchers at MIT and the University of Pennsylvania. And it aims to develop a better understanding of how teachers and students can be supported as a complex systems curriculum is integrated into high school science classrooms. The initiative offers students the opportunity to learn biology in a holistic rather than piecemeal way using virtual simulations and allows for them to be done, well, they could be done in person, but they've been done virtually since March. For example, in one simulation, students were simulating ecology experts and had to determine how fish in a pond were affected by by various cultivations of the land, how fish affect other organisms and other such simulations. Students were able to explore patterns through these simulations simulations. The project offers a meaningful way to open discussion and tie concepts together. And the Biograph project is now completed and the next phase of the collaboration is called Detect. And that will enhance the integrative science curriculum. And Mrs. D. Nicola actually kind of, we really recognized her for this in the curriculum committee, but she received the honor of being asked to be a facilitator of the program as a teacher expert and a design collaborator on new simulations. So that's something that's really exciting for our district. It shows how innovative and how innovative some of our our teachers are. And I I also wanted to point out that teachers are using these simulations and this program in more than 50 countries around the world. So she really has, she she and this program really have quite an impact worldwide. Okay, and then this Gita Faria, who is our supervisor of K through 12 science, was also present at the committee meeting and shared that the whole science department has gained a great deal from participating in these. the whole science department has gained a great deal from participating in these collaborative endeavors. Okay. The second piece of our curriculum, I have been reporting out for the last several months that each month we are going to talk about the district's efforts in race equity and social justice. So this, this month's update, uh, was about how our district implements the Amistad law. And for those who are not familiar, the Amistad law, um, and Ms. Noel Baxter, who is our social studies, um, curriculum supervisor, came to talk to the committee about this. And the, the Amistad law, um, in New Jersey requires districts to teach the history of the African slave trade um, and slavery in America and the depth of the impact of this on society, as well as triumphs of African Americans and the significant contributions that African Americans have made, as well as to continue to make the, make in the development of our country. So the Amistad law requires that this history be infused throughout the social studies curriculum in order to provide an accurate, complete and inclusive history. Our district's social studies curriculum is focused on big questions and ideas rather than the specifics of events and dates. It is idea focused. Each grade's social studies curriculum is adapted for the following. It's centered around big ideas, concepts that help students understand the world around them. Uh, essential questions. It engages students in critical thinking about the big ideas, utilizing evidence from a variety of resources. Um, content, course proficiencies and recommended units of study provide the broad scope of the content to be covered in each course and grade level. The instructional plan where teachers determine how to engage students in the study of the big idea, the essential questions and content, and choose relevant case studies and examples. And then, um, the last part of the curriculum is supporting teachers through professional development, resources and pilot lessons. So in fifth grade, students begin to learn about the slave trade and those who were brought involuntarily to the Americas and the impact of slavery on the Africans. And then this evolves throughout middle school. The big ideas and essential questions that the middle schoolers, um, study are who has power, who has rights, trying to understand how slavery was used to obtain power over others, was created for profit and encouraged by racism, and becoming more conscious of the impact slavery had on the colonies in the United States. On the high school level, there are many courses that deal with the Amistad law, New Jersey's Amistad law, U.S. History I, U.S. History II, Global Perspectives. There's a course Racism, Genocide and the Holocaust, and that course has a heavy focus on present day racism. Um, and then the Amistad law is also infused throughout other elective courses. It's also reflected in some of our, in our arts and literature courses. Um, more recently, the Inclusive Curriculum Initiative in New Jersey guides that the district must focus on various identities and perspectives, including contributions from LGBTQ communities and those with disabilities. So that's, um, one piece of, um, of that agenda item. Another is that we talked about Dr. McGary, um, starting up We Wednesdays. Um, and we stands for wellness and equity. So in the We Wednesdays, staff will have opportunities to come together to discuss various topics related to wellness and equity. And this is based on the success of the professional development that I reported out on in September that occurred at the beginning of the school year for staff. Um, and teachers were so engaged by those discussions on, um, race inclusion and equity that they request, they wanted to continue those conversations. So that will be, um, We Wednesdays, uh, let, um, by Dr. McGary. And, um, in another initiative to, um, move toward equity, more equity in our district, Dr. McGary is currently reviewing the demographics associated with enrollment in our AP courses. And he's looking at the last four years of data to understand trends and patterns and to continue to identify strategies to make these courses accessible to all students who may wish to take AP courses and to help those who opt to take them to be successful when they do. Access to these courses has already been made more flexible in terms of prerequisite courses, GPA and teacher recommendations. Students can now get waived in if they don't meet previous requirements. We want to ensure from an equity standpoint that we're recognizing and nurturing potential in students earlier and preparing them to be successful in these AP courses when they choose them. Um, so that is this month's report on race equity and social justice. Um, just the last, the last piece that we discussed in, in the, um, curriculum committee was, um, Dr. Mast's district goals, uh, focusing on equity, technology, communication, pandemic planning and professional development, which she already went over in the instructional update and our next meeting is December 8th.
Thank you, Ms. Sariani. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Karen?
Stephanie, thank, thank you, Dr. Kulikowski. Stephanie, thank you for that report. Um, one thing you mentioned that really struck a chord with me is the, I, is idea focused curriculum. And what that says to me is that we're preparing our students not to be memorizers and spinning out facts, but thinkers and being able to take an idea and infuse how they feel about it and execute. And actually, one of the benefits of the virtual platform is that I'm able to hear my children with their teachers and with their peers. And obviously my, my children, it's a small sample size, but I can attest that that's working. They're not just saying if the answer is A, the answer is B. The teachers are encouraging conversation based on fact and that's due to the curriculum work. So thank you.
It's more about the bigger concepts and not about the events and the dates. And, you know, even in science too, we've talked at past curriculum committees, how we've moved more toward problem based learning and, you know, helping kids understand the bigger concepts and problem solve and, and, um, it's, it's an important part of, of the learning in our district. So.
And preparing them in our real world. So thank you for that work.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Mitchell. Stephanie, do you have anything else? Anybody else have a comment or a question from Ms. Sariani? Okay. Then we'll move on to the facilities, a report, please.
Sure. So, uh, facilities committee met on Monday, the ninth. Um, there were five items that we spoke about, the first being the completion of the broader gymnasium. So that, that, um, has been completed and Potter Architects will be, um, around, uh, this week was expected to be, uh, doing a punch list. Culinary arts class with the high schools complete with the exception of some flooring repairs that need to be done by the contractor. Masonry work at Park Middle School, including a punch of, punchless items are completed as well. Um, work continues on the ventilation, um, systems in the district. So the unit vent cleaning has been completed. And Dr. Lynch was, uh, expected to be in the district on Tuesday to reassess the cross section of the rooms. And currently obtaining a second quote for rooftop units that require replacement at Park Middle School, as well as obtaining quotes for getting additional fresh air into the park nurse's office. So hopefully that'll be on the agenda in the, in either the next or the December meeting. And that concludes my facilities report.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Murray?
I, I wonder if, um, I could just expand upon Dr. Lynch's visit. He was here, I, I believe it was, um, last, was it, was it Monday or?
Tuesday.
It was on Tuesday. Okay. And, and Amy Winkler and I followed him to do the cross section of rooms, um, based on the, the previous assessment of those particular rooms. Amy, would you be able to speak to the work that we did that day?
Yeah, sure. Um, uh, based on, um, the original assessment that Dr. Lynch had done, uh, he created a list of, uh, rooms to go back to, to reevaluate now that, um, a number of, a number of, uh, adjustments have been made. Um, are, you may or may not have heard my previous reports on, on our systems or you may have read some of the reports that we posted from our, our contracted, um, our consultants who, who helped us on this, but, um, our, our HVAC systems are, uh, sort of a hodgepodge of different things in different, different rooms throughout our buildings. Um, some of them are quite old. Uh, a number of them were installed in the 50s and the 60s. Um, some of them, the maintenance crew are, are not as old as the systems that they're working on. Um, the crux of the situation in most of the rooms in most of the schools are the unit ventilators. Um, unlike a more modern building, each of these ventilators is, uh, an independent unit. There is no system connecting them together where we can just make adjustments from a central office or a, uh, or a computer screen. Um, they're all individually controlled. So, um, in the number of the, the, the upgrades that we made to these systems, the adjustments that we made for the most part was opening the outside air dampers so that, uh, there would be a flow of air from outside the building coming into each of the rooms. Um, in some of these cases, the, the system itself, the, the damper controls are, are not functional. And in those cases, the, the damper had to actually manually be opened and, and set in an open position. In other cases, it was a matter of just adjusting controls. Um, but almost every one of the, the unit ventilators needed to be opened and adjusted in one way or another in order to get them to, um, to be set so that we would have sufficient outside airflow coming into the classrooms. Um, so we were evaluating, uh, the airflow from the systems. One of the other things we found in our initial assessment was that, um, even when the dampers were, were quite wide open, um, there wasn't a lot of air flowing through the unit ventilator and out of the unit. Part of the problem was that the coils inside, um, were gunked up, uh, for lack of a more scientific term for that. Um, it, it is common practice for our, our, um, custodial and maintenance crews to, to use a vacuum to vacuum out the, the coils and the insides of the, the unit ventilators. But, um, this required much more intense involved, um, amount of work because of all the, the years of accumulated dust in the system. So they used, um, compressed air to blow the systems, uh, to blow out the, the coils and get all of it out. Uh, I believe that in, in most or all cases, they also used some sort of a chemical solvent to remove, uh, material that was accreted to the coils. And, um, and then placed them back, you know, closed up the, the unit ventilators again. So we went in and we measured and we found that in many cases, the airflow is almost like, most like they were new, like back to what they were initially designed to, for, uh, in terms of how much airflow was coming through the unit ventilators, uh, which was a huge difference from what we had seen the first time when we did our, um, initial evaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Appreciate that. Any other comment or question? Thank you, Mr. Murray. Appreciate your report. Uh, moving on to finance then.
Okay. Um, we met on the, the ninth as well. What we did is we reviewed the budget assumptions and the guidelines for 2021. We, we reviewed each item and then the final product is what was sent out to everybody earlier. On, uh, Thursday, November 19th, like Karen had said earlier, the finance committee will meet with Carmelina Januzanis, I'm sure I butchered her name and I'm so sorry, and Catherine Mantell from Ms. Bochia to review the final audit. Um, we're going to meet together and then we meet alone with Catherine Mantle. And we, uh, have the ability to ask her any questions that we feel necessary. And then there will be a presentation to the full board on the audit results and we'll be asked to vote on the budget that night so that it can be filed by December 5th. If there's a delay, then it will get pushed up to December 17th. And we also discussed the impact of chapter 44. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Brody? Thank you, Ms. Brody. Seeing none, we'll move on to negotiations update. No negotiations update. Then moving on to personnel. Nothing for personnel, any policy?
Uh, yes, I have a policy update.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler.
The policy committee met yesterday and we discussed several policies, which you'll see later on the agenda um, for approval for first reading. But at this time I will give you an update on, um, on what we discussed and what some of these policies are about. Uh, so policy 1581 and regulation 1581, uh, for domestic violence. Um, these are revisions to an existing policy, um, and the creation of a new regulation. Both of them are mandated. Uh, the policy was essentially rewritten to be in compliance with updated state statutes. The changes make it more obvious how and where employees experiencing domestic violence can get assistance. Um, and code and statute citations were updated as well. The regulation was created in order to outline the requirements of the uniform domestic violence policy and the New Jersey Safe Act. Uh, then there's also policy 2422, health and physical education. Um, these revisions, uh, are to an existing policy and they are mandated. This policy was updated to include the requirements of three new state statutes as they pertain to the health and wellbeing of students. Um, and code and statute citations were updated as well. Policy 5330 and regulation 5330, administration of medication. These revisions to the existing policy and regulation are mandated. Policy and regulation were revised to include the requirements for the administration of hydrocortisone sodium succinate. Um, it, for adrenal insufficiency, which is also known as Addison's disease. Um, and code and, code and statute citations were updated as well. Policy 7243, supervision of construction. Uh, the revisions to this existing policy are mandated. Uh, revisions address the criminal background checks required for contractors and their employees working on school grounds, including designating a liaison from the district to the contractors who will be responsible for obtaining these background checks. And, um, code and statute citations were updated as well. Policy 8210, school year. Uh, these revisions, uh, to an existing policy are recommended by Strauss Esme. The revisions include stating that the minimum duration of the school year shall be 180 days and stating the statute for that. Uh, stating that the board will approve the school calendar by May 1st and expanding the circumstances in which the board can alter the calendar. Um, and code and statute citations were updated as well. Policy 8220, school day, uh, is revisions to an existing policy and they are mandated. The policy is revised to indicate the board will annually approve the school calendar, uh, which includes days and times schools are in session, including for shortened days. And the code and statute citations were updated. Uh, policy 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. These revisions to an existing policy are mandated. The revisions include the requirement to display a poster in every school with clear and simple information about the Department of Children and Families State Central Registry in a high traffic area clearly visible to the public in an area accessible and widely used by students. And the code and statute citations were updated for that as well. And then finally, bylaw 0164.6, remote public board meeting during a declared emergency. Uh, this bylaw is new, um, and it is mandated. So the bylaw maps out the requirements applicable to remote board meetings during an emergency as addressed in state administrative code and statutes. Um, our next meeting is yet to be determined, but it will likely be sometime soon. We have several policies that we're looking at. Um, and the recommendations for the board are that, uh, we approve first reading of these policies, regulations and bylaws, uh, when we reach that point in the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Are there any questions or comments from Mrs. Winkler? Seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Winkler for your report. Okay. Strategic planning. There's no additional information since our last update that we were going to be waiting till the spring. Uh, student activities and athletics.
Yes, uh, we met on Monday as well, um, for, for this committee. So we had a couple of updates in that meeting, first being, um, we had an overview provided by Christine Lockwood, who's a student activities coordinator. So in her role, she looks at new clubs, seeing when they're meeting, liaising with club fundraising, um, doing flyers, providing feedback to groups. Also works with other club advisors, um, when they're doing activities. Um, she was asked about which clubs could come and share their works and good learning. So she recommended the student council, students concerned for the needy and sexuality and gender acceptance and yearbook. Um, so we're looking forward to hopefully seeing some of those groups, uh, later in the year. We had a to- total nine update, um, regarding, uh, the balanced use of facilities. Priority given, you know, there's never, you know, has not been a priority given to any one group. Um, we have some coed participants in different groups in different sports such as bowling. And then we. And then we only have two pay to play sports left right now, field hockey and boys volleyball. And the only sport that we do not have, which is listed with the NJ SIA is fencing. And then Mr. Miller came and spoke about fall sports, or winter sports rather, sorry. He spoke around facility based sports such as bowling, swimming and hockey. And then the other sports being done in-house, basketball, wrestling, indoor track and cheering. He went through proposed uh protocols. However, um you know, his 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 main comment is we're following the science and winter sports is not off the table at this time, which um. You know, they're still working with the NJ SIA on specific guidelines regarding that. Um and so at this point, um we're we're still not. Saying that we're not having sports, we're we're waiting for additional guidance. The other thing that he did mention is that we also have a way to stream games in the gym. Through um one of our applications. So um if there is an opportunity that we are gonna have, you know, indoor activities. And the likelihood of of having spectators is probably minimal. So but there will be a way to to stream those games um to 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 everybody so that they can see them. So that was the um student activities and athletics committee report from Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Murray? Seeing none, thank you for your report, Evan. And wellness and equity?
Good evening, good evening. So I have two reports to share. The Board of Ed, the committee members met last week, November fifth. And we discussed um anti racism and healing circles. That we are going to have monthly speakers addressing any topics of anti racism. Unfortunately, you know, Dr. Mast mentioned annual goals, which wellness and equity has been a part of the annual goals. For a couple of years now. Fortunately, with the support of our community groups, which we've partnered with Real Parents, Social Justice Matters, TRHT. We have the support of these community groups that are helping us get um get to our goals and meet them. November twelfth, just today, around five thirty, the task force, including those um community groups, we met together. And we discussed, um we we had, we hired five student assistant specialists in our five elementary schools. We have a designated position that's focusing on diversity and equity. Dr. McGary, um like Stephanie mentioned, uh is doing the We Wednesdays, which we're very excited about. And we also have a tool that we um addressed today, the logic modeling tool. And that is specifically addressing concerns that have come to our attention regarding systematic racism. And address how systematic racism operates within our school district. We also discuss bringing more representation in our school district. What's our long term plan, um addressing a lot of our alumni returning and retaining those um alumni in the. Our teachers in the school. We're reviewing the process. We're putting supports in place so that we can retain those minority teachers. And we also looked at recruiting efforts as well. We also talked about curriculum, which Stephanie also mentioned. And um you know, fortunately, we've also been working with community relations. So that we can get the good work out that we've we've been doing and. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Williams?
One thing I wanted to add, um first of all, Tanya has been doing such a great job chairing this committee. So thank you, Tanya, for all that work and organizing the meetings. But what's so interesting about the logic model that Dr. McGary introduced is that it starts with an assumption. So it takes all participants and people working on this to really dig deep. And say, where are we before we try and fix? What are we trying to fix based on an unconscious bias or misinformation from the past? So I just thought that was really impressive in a thorough way to go through, which increases the chances of real change.
Nancy?
Um I just uh wanted to ask Ms. Williams about the healing circles. And uh can you tell us more about them?
On November fifth, last week, we talked about having speakers that can come in monthly, address the community. And talk about um anti racism or any other topics of discussion. It'll be, you know, hubs of hubs of conversation that we can have, open dialogue that um. That we can feel comfortable having.
So the community would be invited?
Looks like we lost Karen.
Yeah, so I'll uh I'll step in until Karen rejoins. I think she had a technical issue, so. Seeing no other committee reports, we'll move on to letters to the board. The board received three emails and one thank you note. The appropriate administrator responded. Um one email was referred to executive session, which Karen mentioned earlier when we started. So now I'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Mast.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. For one S I moved that Board of Education approves the corrected twenty 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 one district calendar. To include a hundred and eighty three student days rather than a hundred and eighty two student days. It was just a miscount of the original calendar.
I'm back. I don't know what happened. We just jumped out there.
Superintendent's report, Karen. Dr. Mast, we just don't, the calendar. I just don't know if we're voting on that or not. It doesn't have an asterisk.
So moved, Winkler.
Art, that's what I wanted to ask. Are we voting on that tonight? Because that was uh for next week's vote.
Okay, so so we will vote on that next week. Thank you.
All right, uh thank you for taking over during my absence there. So that was just a correction. There was no real change to the calendar. It was just the the count was different, right?
That's correct, and we're voting on it next evening. Yep.
Okay, sorry. You can continue with your superintendent's report, Dr. Mast, please.
That concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mast. Then would you continue with the personnel agenda then?
I'd be happy to. I I believe the Board of Education approves the superintendent's report for personnel. That we report, that we, that was reported on in an exec this evening.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mrs. Sarah Jacky, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Be- I'm sorry, Mrs. Brody.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer.
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mrs. Surianni.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams. Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Dr. Kulikowski.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Dr. Mast. And thank you, Mrs. Sarah Jacky. Next, that brings us to the business functions. Mrs. Sarah Jacky?
Uh yes, the one item that we would like voted on this evening is um the staff training, one B U S. I'd like the board to approve the training report dated November twelfth.
So moved, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any question or discussion for Mrs. Sarah Jacky on one B U S? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
The other items on the under business functions are two B U S. Um and that's after you hear the annual audit, um asking that you accept the audit. Three B U S is um the are the budget assumptions and guidelines, which were sent out to you, I believe, yesterday. And I'll be asking for the board to acknowledge receipt. Uh there's minor changes from last year that you'll probably want to look at. Four B U S, um I'm asked, I'll be asking the board to acknowledge receipt of the security and fire Joe reports for the month of October. Five B U S, I'll be asking for the board to approve the following participating schools for non-public school initiative program agreements. Six B U S. I'll be asking that the board approve the purchase by the J C C uh for their non-public school security. Program in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety eight dollars. Seven B U S, I'll be asking the board to acknowledge receipt of various disbursement listings for October. Eight B U S, I'll be asking the board to acknowledge receipt of the board secretary report, the treasurer of school funds reports and the budget of judge. Uh ju- the budget adjustments. And nine B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve the bills uh for the period October twenty fourth through November thirteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarah Jacky.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to policies. Mrs. Winkler?
Yes, so at this time, I would like to ask that uh the board approve first reading. Or am I first reading of the following policies and regulations and bylaw?
Amy, this says for next week. Are we doing this tonight?
Thought we were gonna do first reading tonight.
It it's usually at the second meeting of the month.
Okay, okay, then at next week's meeting, I will be asking for the board to approve first reading. Of those policies I discussed earlier this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Okay, other board business is next. One O B B liaison reports. Is there any report for affordable housing? Seeing none, Garden State Coalition of Schools?
There's a meeting next week if people are able to attend.
Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. It's Wednesday, is it not, at three thirty?
Actually, the time has changed. They're gonna try the morning uh to see if they get better attendance, so I believe it's at nine AM. I can send you an update, a reminder.
Please do. Thank you very much. Uh Mrs. Winkler?
I was just gonna ask if she could send that to all of us.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. Uh municipal alliance committee, MAC. Ms. Brody, I know you did send us an email with the uh links uh regarding um. Was it COVID testing?
No, it, I I.
It's the big notice. Steel.
Yeah.
Mac.
Right.
That's why I'm asking.
I don't remember what it was exactly. Um honestly, I'm sorry. But uh what I've been doing is as Karen has been sending me things, I've been sending them out. They have not had any meetings.
Oh, okay. Thanks for letting us know, because I didn't know that they were not meeting. I I know usually they met at the board office.
Right.
But with this, I wasn't sure if they were doing some some Zoom meetings.
Not that I'm aware of, not that I've been notified of.
Okay, well, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Then that brings us to New Jersey School Board. Okay, uh PTA Council. A president's council, we are not meeting till the end of the month. Uh P SPF Shared Services.
I do have a report for shared services.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler.
Shared Services met this morning. Um at the meeting, we uh. The meeting began with our Dan Mason from Jersey Professional Management telling us a little story about a neighborhood party. That had been held recently outside with social distancing with masks, but now the host has tested positive for coronavirus. He meant this story as a little warning to us to just keep that in mind, that numbers are going up. Then we had an update from Scotch Plains uh that the municipal building is open to the public. But not many people are coming in. Um they have someone who takes temperatures at the door. Employees do self-assessments before coming to work each day. Testing is available for the employees. Kane University does free testing on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays with an appointment. But there are also remote testing sites throughout the county that are available uh for testing without an appointment. From Fanwood, we heard the update that the municipal building remains closed to the public. Um and will be closed even to employees uh in the very near future as they are going to begin construction. That should take a few months. Mayor Smith reported out a little bit about his wellness challenges being modified to include coronavirus safety this year, including wearing masks. Social distancing, quarantining when necessary. He noted the recent spike in cases uh even locally. And he continues to record his daily video with updates for the community. Deb Sarah Daki noted that the schools require daily checks of staff and students. This these checks are self-reported using a Google form. Anthony Carter reported a bit about recreation uh basketball. He said that the Rec Commission has decided to cancel basketball this winter because of the increasing number of cases. Fall sports have been running with safety measures in place and there were some positive cases. But it doesn't seem to be spreading during their practices or games. He did note that he had seen a number of spectators at these events uh who are not following safety guidelines. So we, then I gave an update uh similar to the one I gave earlier this evening about our our HVAC. Work that we've been doing. Um I did note that due to several positive cases among the school population in McGinn that uh McGinn School is closed. Until November thirtieth. We have had a number of other cases in other schools in the district um that have required smaller. Groups to quarantine as well. What else? Uh we talked a little bit about um. What we're looking at in terms of our HVAC more long term. Um and that the the repairs that we're looking at would be uh. Whether we we will replace the unit ventilators or try to upgrade them in some way. Um or just adding additional rooftop units with heating, air conditioning and ventilation capability. Each of these options is rather costly and we're really gonna need to look into what's the most cost effective thing. That will give us the best um airflow. Within different parts of different buildings. There was a police update from Chief Conley, who stated that they're in sort of a holding pattern. They, he he was under the impression that they would be teaching the LEED program, uh which you would know. Perhaps as DARE, formerly it was the DARE program. It is a drug and alcohol resistance uh education. And he thinks they'll probably be teaching that virtually. Mayor Smith noted they had recently set up a community policing unit in response to comments received during the TRHT listening tours. The community policing unit is trying to plan events that would be outside uh in light of the pandemic. They are thinking that in the near future, they will probably have something they're hoping uh called COCO with the cops. He also congratulated Chief Conley. The Scotch Plains Police Department was recently reaccredited. And apparently this is accreditation that not, not all police departments in the state have, only about a hundred and sixty do. So uh that was a nice accomplishment for them. In terms of downtown redevelopment, uh Mayor Smith noted that the court was going to move probably to a virtual platform. And that a whole new municipal building uh will be designed. And it will probably, it will possibly be a combination uh municipal building and public library. Kathy Mitchell from uh Fanwood noted that the um. That the Fanwood Library has received a three point five million dollar grant from the state for redesign. Uh and Fanwood, I guess, will put in, I guess, she said will put in the other uh three point five million uh to to build the. To build it. Uh and so they were excited about that. Senior citizen update, Kathy Kathy Mitchell noted that uh they have not met since March. Um and many of the senior citizens don't have access to platforms like Zoom, but a a number of them do. And they are in the process of trying to set up a Zoom meeting. To see how it goes and how many people will attend. In the meantime, the senior coordinator has been communicating with the seniors by telephone. Uh our next meeting will be January thirteenth. And that is the end of that report.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mrs.? Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mrs. Winkler? Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Um, truth, racial healing and transformation? No report?
We meet again this Sunday. We haven't met in the last two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Sorianni. Um, Union County Educational Services Commission? Seeing no one, Union County School Boards Association?
Uh, Union County School Boards Association met last week. I, um, I have no idea what I did with my notes from that meeting, but I will tell you that, uh, we had a presentation from a woman representing the, um, the Marines recruiting office, uh, somewhere in sort of south-central New Jersey, um.
I thought it was Fort Dix.
Was it?
The joint Fort Dix-Maguire, uh, base. That's where I thought she was from.
Well, I don't think it was Fort Dix. I think it was somewhere else, but, but near, near there, not too far.
It was, she was from, captain from the Marines, yes.
Yes. And, um, she gave a presentation about various, uh, things that they offer to students in terms of, uh, college scholarships and, and things like that. Um, and then after that, we had a bit of a, sort of a open discussion about what, uh, different districts are seeing in terms of, um, in terms of reopening of their schools, uh, this fall. It was, uh, there, there was no specific topic for, for the, for the meeting. Uh, usually we have a speaker come and, and speak for some time on a particular topic, but that was it for this meeting.
Yeah, the, the main thrust was the military and having that as a, a viable option in order to pay for college with only a four-year commitment, whether it was the reserve or, or full-time. And she was giving some specifics of different careers. It's not just military-type careers, but, you know, health careers. Uh, you know, ever, anything you can think of, there's a military occupation that goes along with it. So that instead of students just going and paying their own tuition and taking out student loans, that they can consider doing a military career and having the military, uh, make the payments for the education.
Yeah, and she talked about the various skills that they would gain that would, uh, be wonderful on, on, um, resumes.
Yeah, that would transfer into, you know, civilian life once they did their commitment, if they chose to leave, if they didn't make the military a career. Yeah, she was a very good speaker. Well, thank you for, for providing that information, Mrs. Winkler. Um, for two O E B, are there any requests to attend workshops? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes at our next meeting. We are going to have minutes from October 15th, open agenda meeting and its executive session. And October 29th, regular board meeting and its executive session, uh, for approval. And at this time, we'll move to our second public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public School Bylaw 0164, 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments. There's a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business would be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. And if you would like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. Callers should state their full name and the town in which you reside once you are unmuted. Please note, board members cannot respond regarding concerns with individual students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed with the superintendent's office. At this time, Ms. Broadbent, do we have someone ready to make a public comment?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Ryan Wall.
Okay.
Hi, Ryan, please unmute yourself.
Hello, um, my name is Ryan Wall. I live in Scotch Plains. I'm actually a senior at the high school, um, a four-year varsity player and a two-year captain for the girls' basketball team. I just wanna echo what the boys were saying before and say that we understand the risks of playing and we're hoping for your support to continue the winter season. Um, I was comforted by the safety protocols and appreciate all the work that you guys have put into making our school safe. Um, I think I can speak on behalf of all of the winter sports, specifically the basketball teams. Um, when I say that, we're really hoping the district allows us to begin our basketball season. I know each and every one of us will be willing to make sacrifices and follow the regulations we need in order to continue the winter season, so thank you.
Well, thank you for making the comment about the sports, and as I said before, we would all love to have the sports continue at this time, but we will be monitoring the safety, and we want our students to be safe, get their education, as well as have fun and do their sport. Thank you so much for having comments at tonight's evening. Ms. Broadbent, do we have, um, our next speaker?
Dr. Kulikowski, Craig Peskin has his hand raised again.
Thank you. Mr. Peskin, please state your name and the town in which you reside once you unmute.
Okay, yeah, I don't know why you can't see me, but, uh, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's Craig Peskin from Scotch Plains. Just a quick question for Dr. Mast. I'd like to know if, uh, we're telling our Scotch Plains Fanwood families that if they have a college student coming home from a state on the travel advisory list, that they should not be sending younger siblings to school for 14 days. I know there's other schools in New Jersey that are following this rule. Thank you.
So, 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 thank you, Mr. Peskin. We are going to be sending out a, a communication within the next couple of days regarding, you know, the, the safety protocols around the holidays, um, and travel. And, you know, college students returning, et cetera, but thank you for highlighting that need.
Thank you for your, your call, Mr. Peskin, and thank you for your response, Dr. Mast. Uh, Ms. Broadbent, the next person in the queue, please.
Dr. Kulikowski, at this time, no one has their hand raised.
Okay, well, we'll give that a moment, and I'll just review the upcoming meetings. Um, the upcoming scheduled meetings are Thursday, November 19th, which is next Thursday for a regular public meeting. 7:30 for executive session, 8 o'clock for public. It will be held virtually. Thursday, December 17th, we will have a, a regular public meeting at 7:30 for exec, 8 o'clock for the public portion, and again, that will be held virtually. On Thursday, January 7th of 2021, that will be our annual reorganization meeting. That will be held at 7:30. That is just the public portion. Uh, it is to be determined whether we will be in person or be virtual. We still have to make that decision. We'll see how things go over the holidays. And then Thursday, January 21st, our regular public meeting will be, uh, 7:30 for exec and 8 o'clock for the public portion. And again, that one is to be determined. Ms. Broadbent, are there any, uh, callers ready now?
Uh, Dr. Kulikowski, there are no hands raised.
Okay, um, then at this time, I'm gonna close the public comment portion and move on to the remarks for the good of the order. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. So, I just wanna commend Park Middle School today. Uh, my son and I went in for the walkthrough, made the appointment, saw Mrs., Dr., um, I can't remember.
Dumarest.
Dumarest, smiling face behind the mask, and he walked his schedule A and B. And, you know, saw one teacher that ran to the door when she saw him in the, um, the officer. So it was, it was a very pleasant experience. I just wanna thank Park. He's looking forward to Monday. I'm a little sad because I did enjoy having him home and listen, listening to the teachers and, you know, making him French toast in the morning, and I'm really gonna miss him. So, I mean, he's, he's off to school, he's ready. Um, he said he's gonna miss me also, but I just wanna say, um, you know, whatever this decision is, even though I'm on the Board of Ed, whatever decision is, you know, I respect that, and whether he goes or stays, that's it. And I also wanna, um, say happy Diwali, um, to everyone that's celebrating. May you be filled with contentment and happiness.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Um, I, I know by your voice that when you were at Park Middle School, you felt that feeling, that Park Middle School feeling. There's a special feeling you get when you are on the campus there. I know when my son was there, I felt it too. It's a very special place.
It is, and this is my third child going there, and he's in sixth grade. He's excited. Um, so I'm, I just wanna commend everyone, and everyone stay safe and healthy, and wear your masks and wash your hands.
And yes, look for those smiling eyes behind, behind the mask. You can't see the mouth, but those eyes are smiling too.
Dumarest was really smiling.
Yes, she is. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Um, who else has a comment for the good of the order?
I, I, I would like to follow up on, on, um, Mrs. Williams' comment.
Okay, Dr. Mast, then we'll have Mrs. Mitchell.
Okay, we, we certainly have been, been recognizing how, how happy kids are to return to school, and uh, I just, I just wanna reiterate, in our restart plan, we said that we need to be ready to, to, to pivot and to, and to be nimble, and, you know, the district team is monitoring the community spread and recognizes that we could need to shift instruction as needed. It could be to go from virtual to hybrid, or it could be to go to hybrid to, to fullback. Um, that isn't in the near future, but we're always looking at the data to know which, which format of instruction that we need to do. Um, to date, S P F is in the moderate regional risk, and when you're in the moderate regional risk, that's when the map is yellow, as Mrs. Rabimba said earlier, and the hybrid model is, is still, um, able to be implemented. You know, the way the numbers are trending in the state indicates that we could be moving into the orange area. So I just, I just want everyone to know that we are watching that, but we're not looking at just the state trend. We're looking at the, the local trend. So, when I talk to the Department of Health, I know what's happening i- in Scotch Plains in particular, because the state numbers are averages, and we could reflect those averages. We could be doing better, or we could be doing worse. But at this point, we are yellow, and those new numbers come out every Thursday. So we will know where we are again next Thursday, but from today, till, till next Thursday, you know, we are, we are in a place where we could move forward with the hybrid model. Also recognizing that we have to do all of the safety pieces that people are mentioning, and not only that, you know, if people are coming in from out of state, or if you're visiting people, it's, it's very important that you're always acting like you could be an asymptomatic COVID carrier. Or the person you're talking to could be, because that's, that's what's happening. When we're getting these cases, it's because people have been with someone, and they were, they were fine in that situation, and then it turns out that a person is positive. And then you have a first contact, and then it starts this whole domino effect. So whenever you're, but whenever you're encounter, having any type of social situation, you have to act as if you, you have COVID, or, and where the person who you're, who you're interacting with does. And, and that might sound fearful, but i- it isn't. It's just the way that we keep our numbers in, in the place of yellow. And in staying in the places of yellow, that keeps us in the place of hybrid and moving towards the place of green, which would be fullback. Um, but right now, the way that the numbers are going in New Jersey, it's going from yellow to orange. And if that happens to us here, we're going to have to be ready to go back to virtual. Um, so, we have had 31 positive cases in, in Scotch Plains Fanwood since, since September. And that, that means that we had 31 positive cases while we've been virtual. And we've also had to do 84 quarantines based on those types of positive cases. So those numbers are very disruptive. It didn't disrupt instruction because we were virtual. But as we open up, when you start quarantining teachers, that's what's going to close down classrooms, and it, it's going to be a roller coaster ride as we've seen in the districts that are near us that have been open. You could see that, you know, Westfield and Cranford, those two, uh, I, I'm most familiar with. You know, they've been opening and closing all along, so we have to be ready to do that as, as we begin to open. And, and we are, but I need everyone on this, this roller coaster with me. Thank you.
Dr. Mast, thank you. Um, if people are nervous about sending their students in, they do still have the option to remain virtual, do they not?
That's true. Yes.
Thank you. And Karen, uh, Mitchell, you also wanted to make a comment for the good of the order?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kulikowski. I wanted to echo the sentiments that Tanya said. I, my son went to fifth grade today for the first time, and that joy was felt, and the happiness was there. But we aren't in control of the pandemic and the numbers. So, an important message, and I heard other parents saying, was how happy the kids were to be back shows the resilience of our students. They haven't been in school for eight months. And the community that the teachers were able to continue on the virtual platform was evidenced by them not skipping a beat, going back. So, I, I implore everybody who's listening to continue that message, that let's enjoy it when it's there, but there is so much out of our control right now that no matter what comes our way, we're still a Raiders community, and we are still Raiders Nation. But we have to be safe. Things, again, things are out of our control. But, um, you know, bravo to the teachers for creating this opportunity. I didn't, I didn't see children scared to go back or unsure. They were happy, and if we have a situation where we have to stay home, they'll be happy again. We will get through this, as evidenced by what we're seeing now.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Are there any other comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, then can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Um, any question or discussion about this? I didn't think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nobody's abstaining? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.